There is a redevelopment.
Bill, did you write up this insurance thing? Did you write up this insurance thing that got handed out? I love it.
We did not get the schedule. I'll tell you honestly.
Okay, so we threw 2.4 million in big deal.
And then they don't pay anything other than check. And I, this is business. All right. Go ahead. I'll talk, I'll finish that later.
Susan's going to open the meeting here. She's got.
(laughing).
Good morning, everyone. We were opening this meeting of the DeKalb County Commissioners and the date is August 22nd, 2022. Good morning, Dottie.
Good morning. Hey, let's talk recruiting, hiring, things like that, first of all. The sheriff's department had two confinement officers who started last week. There is one imminently in the pipeline, but I don't know after that what their backlog is when it comes to employees. The Veterans Services Office had interviews on Friday, and we can talk more about that later on when Rhonda comes in. The Extension Office, Alicia is working on setting up at least one interview the week before Labor Day, and then she's waiting to hear back from another candidate for the clerical position there. I asked, so how is it working, you know, with one clerical person? And she said, well, it's working. But, this is her quote, "But I'm afraid if we keep asking all of this of her, she may get burned out sooner than later." So, that's why they're hoping. Because I thought, oh my gosh, to bring in a new person at fair time, you know, when those guys are bonkers that week. So, that would be a real baptism by fire. But we'll see how that schedule works out with the Extension Office. Then, let's see, Central Communications, we are still taking applications. We've had some really great applications, the evaluations that we have done at Work One. We've had some great scores. We've had some people that are scheduling their sit-alongs, so they are moving along with that process. I do not have an answer for you on the Assessors Office right now. For Community Corrections, they held interviews for the residential facilitator positions last week, and they'll be wrapping those up. They do have eight really good resumes for the Director of Intervention Services, and they're going to begin interviews very soon for that position. So that's a positive there. That's really it for us having things out and about. Of course, we always have our line in the water. We're always fishing for those applicants with, you know, confinement officers. We spread a pretty far net, you know, as far as we can. But, the sheriff emailed me in regard to an article that I had found on a police recruiting website, talking about recruiting and retention. And he was at a sheriff's conference, and he confirmed, everybody's having the same problem, but we're not as bad as some. So, I don't, you know, it's like, okay, it's bad, but not as bad as others. So, I don't know if you take comfort in that, you know, it's misery loves company.
Some hope, maybe. Some hope, maybe needs to turn around eventually.
Maybe, yeah. So, the, let's see, we have the Hoosier Start representative coming in on August the 25th. Didn't have a great response from either our employees who are currently enrolled, I guess, maybe they don't want to go over their accounts with the rep. And so far, haven't had a great response either from employees who would like to enroll in that, but he still wants to come up. I haven't met him yet. He's new, so it'll still be a good, a good one-on-one, you know, meet and greet. He only works out of Huntington, so it's not like he's coming in from Indianapolis for, you know, one-hour thing. We have the One America will be coming in on October 4th for the, that quote-unquote "open enrollment" of anyone who doesn't currently have the long-term disability. I told you, that's the only thing that we have, we have going on. The perf, speaking of benefits, you know, I had, I still have not gotten any responses from any of my HR network that they have the My Choice program. Now, whether or not it is people decided at the time that it wasn't going to save the entities as much money as they thought, it wasn't a benefit to the employees, the retired employees, I don't know. Nobody is really quite sure. And so, you know, I thought, well, we probably ought to talk about it if it's something that you guys want me to dig deeper into, or not. You know, we at least know from, from the survey, you know, somebody had asked, why don't we have a retirement plan where you can be vested sooner than 10 years? Well, it's 10 years and 65 years old, of course. And, you know, we, the possibility is there with the state program, but it doesn't appear that anybody offers it. Or, you know, was it just the, well, that's the way we've always done things? I don't know.
My son's wife is on the My Choice.
Right.
They selected it because they have more control over the investments, and they can get the money out quicker. In other words, it's, and so, should she decide to quit teaching, she can actually build quicker through it. It's not, the benefit's not quite as good as far as guaranteed. It's not, it's more of a 401K is what I call it than a.
Right, yeah, definitely.
But, I, I love it, or I think I do. We'll see in the future.
Yeah, how well they do. Well, and I think, I think schools probably availed themselves more of that. And is that because you have perhaps a little more, I would say, transient employment?
Could be.
And people are coming and going, changing schools, dropping out of the workforce, coming back in. What might it be? Whereas more cities and counties might be a little more, I hate to use the word "stable", but the employment may be longer.
Okay.
That was my take on it. Makes sense?
I was really interested in being vested in less than 10 years.
Oh, yeah. I mean, especially if it doesn't cost the county more. The, one of the comments in the questions was, why can't we have something, you know, it doesn't make sense for an older person to come to the county. Well, it's not our job to really provide retirement to people if they decide, hey, I want retirement then. But then again, if it helps bring in good people and it doesn't cost us any more than regular perf, I don't have a problem with it. There's, obviously, you can't bring someone in four years before they retire and then throw them on, you know, you know, so.
Yeah. The only part of the perf that you can get sooner is that annuity. If you leave the, that, that part of it, you don't get the pension that the county puts in the 11.2% of the person's gross wages. The employee gets back whatever that, you know, invested part of that.
Which is their money, anyway.
It's their money. Yep, exactly. So, yeah, there's no matching. The only thing that I could see us changing about the current situation is that the county would provide that 3%. It's a mandatory 3%, but it doesn't matter if the employee pays it or the employer pays it.
Right.
All right. So I'd say, I'm not to look into it any further.[563.04][563.04](laughing) Okay. Oh, let's see. Thank you to our Systems Department. We now have updated panic buttons, you know, on our computers in HR, which has been necessary not for our department, but for the departments who are in our building. So sometimes it's nice to have that if we are overhearing a commotion in the lobby, which has been known to happen from time to time, as you can imagine, with the population of the departments. The, you know, tensions and emotions get pretty high, and sometimes you just need a mediator. So, anyway, thank you. The, our new jail Systems Administrator and the, and the previous one, who is training him, it's one of those things that they've been working on. And I had, I've had a great report on our new employee over there. So it's like two thumbs up from IT so far. The meeting that you guys have scheduled, the executive meeting for department heads regarding ours. Jack Smith, who heads up the department heads meetings, we would like to, during that meeting, maybe at the end, ask, it's kind of a big group, talk about what the department heads would like to see in going forward with department heads meetings. We haven't had one since early 2020. So, we need to get more of those in-person things, you know, like Todd was saying much earlier, about meeting a face-to-face and having a, you know, a forum.
I think that's important. I think we should.
So, we would like.
Definitely, yeah. Try to facilitate that.
Yeah, yeah. We'd, we'd like to, whether or not it's go back to the quarterly, we had them quarterly, they were in here. Usually Jack had a few items, you know, HR always has something to talk to department heads about. You know, that, we talked earlier about communication. Maybe this is a way for commissioners to get more communication out to our department heads and then filter down. So, if you guys are agreeable, Jack would like to say something, you know, during, during the meeting, and, you know, that might work for all of us. You know, open that line of communication for you guys, and then get back to what we did with the department heads. So, the last thing that I have before we maybe start on something that Bill handed out, Lindsay and I will be doing an I-9 audit. You know, the I-9 is the document that every employee completes to verify that they are eligible to work in the United States. And, and then we run everybody through E-Verify. And so, it's always a good thing to go through them, make sure that you have, you have actually gotten everyone's I-9. And sometimes that's an odd thing, because, you know, we have board members who aren't, you know, like, maybe in the private sector, they don't consider them employees, however we do, because we pay them through payroll. And, and then you have the weird thing about the election workers. Some election workers are employed by us, others are not. So, we just, I like to do that every year. We take a sample and just kind of go through, make sure that we have them, that's number one, and make sure that between the employee and HR that we completed them correctly, because the fines attached to that are very high, and we really don't want that to happen. Yeah. When, one of, the first project that I did when I came onboard was I did an I-9 audit of, of everybody. My favorite was that somebody used their Sam's Club ID card for the ID.
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh-huh. It's not on the list. From column A, column B, column C, not there, Sam's Club. Yeah. And now Costco.
Have you seen, have you seen the movie Benchwarmers where he writes it with crayon? I am 13.
Exactly. You know, I mean, you know, and, and that's, it's comical. I wish I would have kept it, but I didn't. I mean, yes, we did keep it, because you have to keep them for 75 years after the employee has left our employ. But, anyway, it's just one of those functions that you really need to do, try to keep, keep us all out of the, out of trouble.
Is the fine if you, if there's a problem with employee and you don't have correct documentation, or is the fine if you just do not have correct documentation?
Oh, it's a fine for every infraction on the form.
All of the above.
Yeah.
And probably some other ones that aren't even listed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and early on, I used, I used blue highlighter because the orange was just too stressful for me, so I had to keep it down to blue.
Do you know if the federal government's given these illegal immigrants the proper forms to give us so we can hire them, because that would, that would help?
Well, they have to go, they have to drum through, jump through some hoops in order to get the correct documentation.
I know they get a cell phone money and a bus ticket, I just thought maybe they give them the documents, too.
You know, I could, I could tell you a bunch of stories about my previous life, and, you know, I-9s and documentation of potential employees who were not employed by one of our divisions in my previous life. So, anyway, anyway, you know, and that's, that's kind of a big thing. And, and Lindsay is still coming along really well. She's, you know, hitting those training marks that I had hoped for, and the customer service level and, you know, what she's trying to accomplish with the different departments and the different projects that we have. So I'm very happy about how we're going forward. So, then, last week, I sat in on a webinar that Erdl, who came and did a presentation during, during our insurance search. It was a very nice webinar. I passed along to you some of that, the details, some of those statistics that they passed along. And, you know, we do, we already do some of the things that, you know, that were mentioned during the, you know, during the webinar about having, you know, smokers are, have a higher premium than, or I should say tobacco users have a higher premium than non-tobacco users, and then the spousal carve-out. You know, those are two basics that we've been doing for quite some time, so.
You're saying some half-spousal, spousal carve-outs in the county?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm, yep. So, you know, that's one of those things that, you know, the brokers suggest that if you want to try to save some money, and, you know, if you think way, way back when Auburn Foundry was having so many issues, and they were probably on the cusp of all of this, all those years ago, and they had a spousal carve-out, and boy, did that raise, holy heck, with their employees. I can remember that vividly, that, because of course, you know, it was a union facility, and the company wanted to try to save some money, to try to save the company, and then, okay, if your spouse has coverage at their employment, then I'm sorry, but they cannot be on here. And how many spouses did that kick off? And, you know, how much money then did the company save? So, it's, you know, it's one of those basic things that, that the county, you know, is doing for that. So that segues into what Bill found and what he passed out to all of us, and I'll let you take it.
Okay. I guess starting out with paragraph A or the first comment, and then, and there again, these are ideas that I had. The numbers that have to be actually worked out and figured out to, to make it all come together and work. But anyway, and this would be county-funded, put 2.3 million in in 2024, and I just use this year's figures, plus, I think, 4% or something like that. I'm not sure about whether the increase each year would be tied to COLA or maybe some other healthcare increase number that we might, might need to come up with or have access to. That's what I went with that. There would be no deductible for employees or elected officials. Just wipe that out. It would all be contributed by co-pay. And there again, I use the numbers of county paying 70%, employees paying 30%. And of course, that was something that would have to be figured out to equal the deductible part of, if you, if you had the deductible, what, what co-pay would it take on the average to make, to come up to that deductible?
And the benefit is they're not getting it deducted out of their pay, though, so they have that money readily available to meet that if needed.
Yeah.
Okay, are we talking deductible? Are we talking premium and a co-pay? Different things. A co-pay is at the medical facility where the person actually pays, pays the bill.
Yeah, that's what we're talking.
Okay.
That's what we're talking. So anyway, there again, that 70/30 could be, probably not the exact number, but, and it could be somewhere in that vicinity, maybe 1/3, 2/3, I don't know. Maybe the first year, we'd want to up that co-pay on the employees, see where we fall in, but I'm not sure that would be the way to go either. But, anyway, ideas. Then, at the end of the health insurance year, if the carryover is more than 10%, employees would get a decrease in co-pay for the following year. In other words, it would be rewarded if we come in underneath or over that 10%.
It's a reward, yeah.
And on the other hand, if we come in under the 10%, the co-pay could be increased on the employees, motivation to do better the following year, hopefully. Out-of-pocket max, and this, of course, this would be co-pay as it accumulates, and there again, these are numbers that, off the top of my head, 5,000, 7,500 for married and 10,000 for family. Smokers to pay an increased co-pay, that would need to be determined. Another option to that might be some kind of an upfront payment out of their withholding or something, out of their check. I don't know what, what that would need to look like for sure.
You know, and something to discuss there is chewing tobacco is just as bad, if not worse, than smoking in some areas.
Well, and that's why we call it tobacco user and non-tobacco user.
And I wanted to add to it vaping.
Yes.
The lung damage, this vaping pens that people are sucking on right now are just as bad, if not worse than smoking. That oil, that, that vaporized oil's going in their lungs and killing their cilia and everything, their lung sacs, or whatever. I'm not a doctor, so don't laugh at me, but I've talked quite a bit about that. I think you'd have to add that in it, too. I think, you know, vaping's in there also, so.
I hadn't thought about that, but yes, that probably should be added.
The burden now, Rob, is more than broad enough to include vaping.
Yeah, yeah.
Sucking on, you know, if it is, we don't need to do anything, we just need to, as in your direction to Dottie and the other departments on making certain everybody's aware of that.
But vaping, I think, should be added, because it's, it's one of the worst things that's happened to our young generation, in my opinion. You know, they've got them hooked, the nicotine levels and that stuff, too. You can buy custom nicotine levels. They get these kids hooked like that on this stuff. But, go ahead, Bill, I didn't mean to interject, I just wanted to.
That's, that's what this is about.
Right, yeah.
Well, and I think that, that whole concept of whether it's tobacco use or anything else, we want to, we'd want to structure this to encourage healthy habits and not incentivize unhealthy habits.
Right. And that's why the flexibility on the co-pay from year to year. You know, and they've got skin in the games. Every time they go and they pull that, have to pull their pocketbook out or their checkbook out, it's going, they're going to see that. I think with deductibles, that's just something that's in the background, don't much think about it.
Right.
Well, we hit it or we don't hit it, you know?
Right.
This is something, every time, it's, they're going to be reminded, you know?
Well, and what I like again about it is they have that additional money already in their paycheck, like Dottie has commented so many times, the hidden paycheck, they don't really see it, they look at the bottom number. So if their bottom number was $500 one week, or one pay period, and the bottom number all of a sudden is 650, wow, I've got an extra $150 in here. I got a cough, do I really want to go to the doctor for a cough now? Whereas before, you know, because now I got to pull some of that money out. But then again, we want people that truly do have problems to get treatment, but they're going to use discernment from now on if they're co-paying, especially if the money's already in their account.
Yeah.
You know? If you have no money in your account and things are covered, you say, well, you go anyway.
Okay, so on the, or the.
No, that means there's no deductible to hit before you.
You will not have to meet a deductible before you get benefits. You'll start right from the get-go, the 30, 70 co-pay.
Yeah.
But you get all your money in your paycheck. Nothing's taken out for insurance. It costs you nothing for the insurance.
There's no premium.
Premiums for.
There's no premium on employees. Right. It's all made up through that deductible.
One thing that those tobacco users throw at me is, that's not the only bad habit that people have.
Well, and that's why I said healthy, healthy habits, because there are a lot of other things that should be incentivized from a healthy standpoint. You can't penalize, I don't, you shouldn't penalize unhealthy things, you want to incentivize healthy habits, just, just from legal standpoint.
And, and that's possible, that could be expanded if, as we go along and develop this, if, if we thought it was appropriate or needed to be.
Yeah. Yeah. Something definitely to look into.
One thing that we want to make sure we factor into this is that we've got to have a stop-loss.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we can take out a policy to do that.
Yeah, you have to have reinsurance.
Swiss Re, some, yeah.
I know, I know. I'll give you the Reader's Digest version here. I met with Steve Snyder, who's the CFO at DeKalb Central, and he, in fact, I've got all of the reports and everything that, that he shared, and we don't have time to do it now, but I'll be happy to share that. They have a great plan with some really impressive numbers, and they do some really smart things. One of the ways that they keep their, their costs down substantially is that they're in the Luther Network, Parkview Network.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Luther now has a presence here in Auburn and at Dupine Hospital, so virtually anything that can be done at Parkview can also be done at Luther, pretty conveniently. And virtually all of the doctors are members of both networks, so it doesn't really affect the, your, your current doctor situation. And they, they really investigated that thoroughly before they, before they made that decision to do that. But they do things, for instance, like if you, if there's a long-term drug treatment needed, they require that you investigate, or the doctors investigate whether generic will work first, and there are a couple of steps there before you get, and they will, they'll pay for, for name drugs.
Mm-hmm.
If that's the only thing that'll work.
Sure.
But it's not automatically, you go on, whatever, some of those ones you watch on TV.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, those commercials aren't free, I'll tell you that, drug commercials.
Yeah, it's, it's like pharmaceuticals, you know? It takes money to do those commercials.
Actually, the biggest expense side is on, for diabetes and related.
Oh, yeah.
Things even more so than, than smoking.
I believe that.
Anyway, point of that being, they have a clinic out there that they, that they stay at, that employees use rather than going to the ER.
Yeah, stairs old house, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then just jumping one step ahead, I think that there is a very good possibility of a discussion to consolidate groups and use of that clinic. So they have, I think, just south, just under 400 employees on the group, about, just under 800 total with, with dependents and spouses and so forth. So if you add what the county would have to that numbers, that's a, that's a pretty substantial group and. have to that numbers, that's a, that's a pretty substantial group. And, I mean, we're a long way from that now, but since we're in the discussion stages, I think that that's something that we could.
Do you mind if I opine on that just a little? I know we're against the clock here, but.
We're good.
One of the big things, I looked in the insurance, was the administrative expense that the insurance company, you know, here's our loss, okay, we paid in two-point-three million, our losses were supposedly two-point-three-five million. But when you really look at it, nine hundred thousand's administrative expense. I think that was the number. And I get it, they have their administrative, but what is in the, is that actual cost or is that saying, okay, that's our cost plus a fifty percent profit margin? In other words, you can label this, that's why I hate statistics. They say seventy-six percent of statistics are made up. That's a joke, but, yeah, you know, but seriously, though, they really are. So I think it's important that, that we look at the administrative costs as that, if they are, they already have that set up, which is nice, the school, they already have, they're already, the negotiation is where a lot of the expense comes in.
They have, they have a great third-party administrator.
Right, that's, that's the key.
And that's, that's what makes or breaks self-funded.
Yes.
That's the key.
Policy is your TPA.
That's right.
I've read that that can run an average of about ten percent of the policy total. Is that, did he give you any indication of what they?
That could be in the stats. I don't know. If he, if it's not in there, I can, I can get that information. I mean,
What that cost?
He's more than happy to continue that conversation, and he gave me the contact information for their, their policy administrator, if we want to have some conversation.
I think we should.
Sure.
So I, you know, I, there's, there's an opportunity there, for some discussion at least, that might solve.
Right. When we thought we was going to do the, the healthcare clinic, that might be the way to go, rather than trying to start up our own.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, it's already established.
It's always cheaper to join someone than to start your own.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the other possibility there, and this conversation hasn't taken place yet, with the city of Auburn is self-funded.
Right.
Too.
Yeah.
And, so, you know, there's a, there's just some potential there.
Do the, do the school employees pay anything for their insurance? Is anything taken out of their check or is it included in their pay?
Uh, no, they do, they do pay.
They do contribute?
Some, it's a small amount.
Because the city pays a dollar, don't they?
I don't know. I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
Don't know that for a fact.
All right. Anyway, it's a good discussion.
I think this is a good, good discussion to have.
And it addresses a lot of the issues that were the employees' question here. Insurance was a big kicker on it.
Yep.
You know, so I think it's, I think we need to really look hard at Bill's plan. We need to look hard to talk to the school, all of it, maybe.
If we can, if we can put together a better plan for, for, for the team and less expense to the county and less expense to the individual members, I mean.
Taxpayers.
Everybody wins.
Win, win, win.
Yeah, and create a healthier atmosphere.
A healthier atmosphere at the same time, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
More motivation to.
That's key to anything we do. We have to incentivize healthy behavior. We have to facilitate that, you know, at every opportunity to get a healthier group.
Right.
I have, I find it interesting that Lutheran's for-profit and they're cheaper than Parkview is not-for-profit, you know, in the, and.
Yeah.
And I don't know why, I'm not going to kick anyone to the curb on this. It's just, it's just interesting statistics.
It's, it's unfortunate that Parkview is one of the most expensive healthcare networks in the nation.
Right.
Not just the region, but the nation.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Something to think about. They're building out here a brand-new, you know, facility, which is great, but why is it so much higher? Part of it is, we are pretty unhealthy in this area, though. If you look at the stats, we're a pretty unhealthy state, and this area is really unhealthy for some reason.
Yeah, the entire state.
And that could be part of it, of course, but, you know, it's.
That's part of it, I'm sure. So I, I don't want to completely say they're at fault because we, we have skin in this game, too.
It's a contributing factor, though, that, I mean, the healthcare cost.
Yeah.
For whatever locality you're in, are, play a big part.
Yeah.
This is a kind of a start, I guess, or a continuation, and.
Yeah.
No, it's great.
Just keep adding ideas to it and.
I like it, Bill, though. I appreciate your thinking of this.
Yeah, I appreciate starting, starting on this conversation where we are now because.
Get going on it.
I like that you're doing this.
Yes.
Have to be for nine and a half years.
A month before and boom.
A month before.
Uh.
Grammy.
What do we do? So, thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Because I'm an insurance for employees.
I hear you.
All right. Anything else? Anything for Dottie? Anyone?
I have nothing.
Anything back for us, Dottie? You're all done.
I'll see you later.
See you, Dottie.
Have a good day. We got a few minutes. Let's catch payroll.
I'll move to approve payroll.
Yeah, I'd second, but I don't think we should pay Mike.
No, just.
Now, I, I second.
Motion I second to approve payroll. Are there any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same. Payroll is approved. Claims, you get a chance to go through those claims?
I skimmed them. I didn't, I did look at them, but I didn't see anything out of line. But to be honest, I just skimmed through them.
They had a big number, by the way.
Yes, a lot of money at once.
We should just hang on to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just easy come, easy go. But of course, highway was nine hundred thousand.
That was a big one, yeah.
On the, just the one claim. So anyway, a motion?
Make a motion, approve claims.
Second.
Motion second to approve claims and additional comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same. Motion is approved.
Bring the other one in. Oh, okay.
The minutes, we're going to skip over the minutes.
Okay.
I've got a hard copy. We have a hard copy here. We can sort through as you go through the day.
Yeah, because I don't think the minutes were in the email, were they? Okay.
They were.
Don't, don't worry about it. I'm just, I'm, I'm not calling you out.
You can call me at C, that's why I.
You were in your pool all weekend, weren't you? Oh, I hear you.
And then our favorite, travel.
Did you all see my other email?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's going to drive and.
Yeah.
And most of it will be, most of it will be.
It's what I saw.
Yeah.
I put an amount that added up, four hundred and three dollars, but most of it will be.
I found it interesting on the Lisa Rogers one, that the women in ag training, and that's fine, but I thought we were getting away from those type of categories of people, you know what I'm saying? It's odd to me that a state function would have that title going forward, just how things, and I'm good to approve it, I just thought it was interesting to see that title.
You had, what, three of them in?
Yeah.
Going forward.
They travel a lot in that office.
A lot.
But it's all fairly low-dollar stuff, you know?
I'll move to approve travel, just in the interest of time.
Yeah, I will, too. That's, I'll second travel.
Motion and second to approve travel. All travel, I might add. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same. Travel is approved. Oh, that ordinance number, what was that? What was that number? Ended up being on the buggy? Yes, I didn't write that.
Thank you, our code is nine.
Nine dash two dash two.
Want a motion on the minutes?
You ready?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any motion and a second to approve minutes? Or any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same. Minutes are approved. meeting and open the public hearing for the horse-drawn buggy ordinance, number two, twenty-twenty-two dash R three dash thirteen. The code is nine dash two dash two. Meeting is for public comment, and we will start out with the public. Who are in favor of this ordinance, please come to the podium, and listen to any comments you might have, or anybody in favor of the I guess we'll go with anyone who is against the ordinance. Please step up to the podium.
Good morning. For the record, Mike Lay, and I don't know that necessarily I'm against the ordinance. I don't think that's the reason I'm standing here. However, it doesn't take, it's not a secret, if you saw the newspaper just a couple of weeks ago, I was featured on the front page as being part of an Amish wedding. And we value that relationship, my wife and I, that we have with the Amish community and, and the friends that we made there. But because of that relationship, I've gotten some feedback about the ordinance from a couple different families that were speaking for their community, and they're actually represented here today. But, and I'm not here to stick my nose in the county's business by any means at all, is to perhaps convey what's been shared to me through some of the members of the Amish community, and they also can speak to that as well. But perhaps maybe a couple of points that I can bring to our attention. You know, the city of Auburn's been a great deal of time the last couple of years studying development south of Auburn in terms of infrastructure, water and sewer. And we focused really from I sixty-nine east to County Road Thirty-five. Well, that was an intentional line of demarcation, County Road Thirty-five, in the, from our belief and recognition that the Amish community from Allen County is pushing north, and they're pushing up in the southeast section of our county. Well, I think everyone probably understands, if the Amish community purchases land, they don't purchase it for development. They purchase, purchase it to raise their families. And so we didn't see necessarily a need to go study for potential development that's never going to likely happen. And whether that's good or bad, the point is, if they get hold of lands, it's for them to live on and make a living and raise their family. It's not to turn around and develop into dozens of lots. And so I'm not neglecting or, you know, recognizing, not recognizing the need for septic systems and what those mean to a community. I'm just simply talking about development. So I want to point that out. Perhaps, too, and then maybe what I saw is, based upon your percentage of gravel roads, you know, I go that way often, and, and it's hard for me to get somewhere without crossing a gravel road, particularly in that area of the county. Another point that, again, that perhaps we want to make sure we're aware of, it's not that they don't, do not pay any gas tax, because that's not true. I mean, where do you see these trucks and trailers and vehicles running every single morning, pulling construction trailers and equipment, those vehicles, whether they own them or they belong to the guy driving it, the purpose that they're running up and down the road is because they're using the road to conduct their livelihoods, right? So they are contributing to gas tax in that sense. So, and then what they use, too, for their farming operations and daily living. And, you know, it all hits home for all of us today when we want to fill our five-gallon gas can just for our lawnmower, and it's twenty-five, thirty bucks. Think about that. They do, too. They've got generators to run, they've got lawnmowers, and they're buying that fuel just like we are, right? So I just wanted to convey that, and again, they're here, they can speak. I believe there's not like an adamant opposition to a tag or a license, it's the amount. And the feedback I get is that the proposed amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars doesn't seem, doesn't seem to be maybe fair in their perspective, and that if there could be, if the ordinance is going to go through, if there was some equality or equity of that relative to the other counties, would seem to be, you know, something that could be talked about. So I just appreciate the opportunity to stop up here and say a few words, and just, again, maybe add some information to the conversation, is all. So I know you got, you know, lots of things that county commissioners have to do and the county councils, and I appreciate that. I live that every day, too. So we have others here that maybe want to comment on that as well, but, you know, appreciate the opportunity to share a few words.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Can I address that, the mayor? You don't have to stay up there, but I agree with a lot of what you said. They do have a lot of construction trailers. I work very close with Amish community, mostly in Page Road, though, so going towards the grade bill. However, you pay gas tax on your construction equipment, that's one thing, but the buggy is free at that point. So if the buggy's using the road, I think it should pay something. We can discuss how much it should be. That's, I think that's a good discussion to have, but I think you have to separate the two. You can't say, well, we pay here, so we don't have to pay here, because then people can drive whatever they want down the road, and, you know, hey, it's not a car, I don't have to pay tax. So I think that's a good discussion, and I appreciate that. Please don't use the term equity, though. I hate that word. Equality, I like. I don't like the term equity. So that's, that's for CNN words, but here nor there, but I think that's a good discussion. I appreciate it.
One, one more thing. We, we had contact with other counties. I talked to a individual in La Grange County, and he advised that we go much higher. He said he doesn't know why theirs is so low, but he says it does come close to covering the cost of repairing those roads. So that's why we settled in on two-fifty. I mean, we were advised as high as a thousand. And so we're a long ways from that. We, we are higher, but there is, there is some conversation of some counties will be increasing. La Grange County spent a half million dollars just for material to repair their roads a couple of years ago. It gets a. It gets expensive. Those trials are not easy to fix and are not cheap.
One thing I would add too is what I don't want to do though, is keep coming back to you guys for an increase every year, or every two years. I think you set the bar a little higher to start with, so you don't come back. One thing I hate government doing, they do, they undershoot costs intentionally, politically, so they get re-elected, and then they come at you and they just take a little more each time. Well, it's just another 10 bucks. It's just another 10 bucks. Before you know it, the government has it all. So, I think a realistic amount upfront's important, but again, the discussion I'm willing to have, so on the mount, but I just don't want to be adjusting this every year.
Right. And we were advised to be ahead of the curve on this. We know it is, we don't have a lot of Amish in the county yet, but the advice to us was to have this in place and be ready and have something on the books, so. Okay, anybody else have any comments against?
Well, this ordinance replaces a current one, is that correct?
What's your name?
No.
There is no current one.
Well, is ordinance 9-2-1 still in effect?
From 20 some years ago? Or 40 years ago?
Right. So, that's still in effect. It replaces that one. Okay. I'm sorry, I can't hear. Yeah, it refers to, the notice refers to replacing an ordinance. No, that's not right. I'm sorry. Oh, here it is. Ordinance 83-5? Okay. MAC short, M-A-C-K short? 5036, County Road 31, Auburn. However, you didn't ask the mayor for his name and address.
He stated it.
Oh, well, this does not replace an existing ordinance?
It replaces.
It does? Okay. And is that the one that says the, there's a fee of $20 for buggies and wagons?
Never been enforced.
So, it's already, there's already an ordinance even though the news says there's no ordinance, there is an ordinance today?
They'd be incorrect. It's never been enforced.
Well, then are you going to enforce a new ordinance? So, the $20 fees have never been, okay. Then I'd like to point out a few things. If this is the correct ordinance, that I, Mike was kind enough to send me the draft, has it been revised since then? Okay. There's a few things. In your "whereas's" right at the start, the number, the third one down, it refers to the $250? That's not accurate, because the horse-drawn trailers are 50. Okay. A question says it applies to associations, does this fee also apply to the DeKalb County Horsemen's Association? So, they'll be required to pay fees for all their trailers that have their horse drawn?
Didn't think about that. Did you? Okay. We didn't discuss it, though.
We did not.
Okay. Okay. So, what, how do we feel about that, then? I didn't even think about that, to be honest with you.
Well, why wouldn't they if they have a horse-drawn trailer?
I don't know how you can do a curve out.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right.
Okay.
It's a good point.
Probably goes without saying, they would have to include them.
Yeah, it would have to include them.
Okay.
Yeah, because this isn't an Amish bill, it's a horse-drawn buggy bill. It's, I think you need to differentiate that. We're not carving out people here.
Okay. A question on what it says is unlawful, number seven. "It shall be unlawful for any person to use or operate a horse-drawn vehicle or a horse-drawn trailer unless said vehicle or trailer does not have an operational..." Does that read correctly? "Does not have"? Aren't you really saying unless such vehicle has an operational? "Does not have"? Does that mean they don't have it?
Unlawful if it does not have. It would be unlawful to use it if it does not have an operational.
I'm just saying, wouldn't it be clearer if it just says, "Unless they have an operational"? "Does not have"? I mean, that's just a legal, your attorney can answer that one.
I'm not following you there.
Okay.
It's unlawful.
Yeah. Along with that same line, though, every other place you've referred to, as far as what's unlawful, they have to be a resident of DeKalb County. For this one, it doesn't say they have to be a resident of DeKalb County. That would indicate somebody coming from Allen County would have to have that light on her vehicle.
Well, that's where you get into the differences in states also on laws with cars, you know? You can still drive your car in a different state even though it doesn't meet that state's requirements, as long as you're registered in another state.
Yeah, I understand it. I'm just pointing out, it doesn't say that in here. It says, "Anyone that comes into the county has to have a light." All the rest of them say, "Only residents of DeKalb County."
I don't think it says that, does it? Does it say anyone in the county has to have a light? Need a copy of that.
Oh. The introductory thing on the third line says they have to be a resident of DeKalb County, and then we refer later to said vehicle, said vehicle.
Okay.
It would be covered. It, obviously, it would be, probably if I were writing it again, I would probably word it the way you suggested, but I think we're okay on the language.
Okay.
Because it follows what's said on the third line, and I agree, it doesn't say that on the sixth line.
Oh, okay.
Right. Then it says, "The flashing light must be mounted on top of the horse-drawn vehicle or horse-drawn trailer." How do you mount a flashing light on the top of a buggy that has no top, or a trailer that has no top?
At the top of whatever's there.
Where is the high point of that?
High point of that.
Does it have like a backside to it? I mean, it's not just a fly-out?
Well, you know, a buggy, matter of fact, the picture in the paper showed a buggy. There wasn't, there was no top on it. It was just a seat with people in it.
With the back of the seat would be the top.
It would be the highest point of the vehicle, Mac.
Well, okay. I'm just saying, as long as you can defend that, there are no top on some of them. And then on delivery of fees, number 11, it says, "For each horse-drawn vehicle fee collected, they have to deposit $250 into the general fund." Well, except you're not collecting $250 for every license. Some of them are $50. That's not what this says. It says you collect $250.
Well, it says, "For each horse-drawn vehicle license fee collected," horse-drawn vehicle. That one is 250.
Some of them are 50. If I have my second one?
That's a horse-drawn trailer, man.
A horse-drawn trailer.
There's a distinction there.
The 50 is the additional. If you have one buggy and you want to do another in the same family, it's just another 50. That 50 will go, it's, I mean, it's common sense.
So, that 50 doesn't go to the fund?
I'm sorry?
The 50 won't go to the?
Absolutely would.
Well, that's not what it says. It says a $250 license fee.
With the initial fee, yeah, the 50 would be included in that.
Well, it doesn't say that.
Well, we'll make that change and put it in there for you.
Then you got each horse-drawn trailer fee collected, you deposit $100. Well, your fee's $50. Where are you getting the $100?
Where's the 100?
In number 11, delivery of fees, "For each horse-drawn trailer license fee collected."
That should be 50.
Yeah, that should be, that's a mistake. That should be 50.
That's a typo, Jim.
That's the top of the next second page?
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is a mistake.
Yeah, that's a mistake. That was in an earlier one. I'm sorry, that one is a screw-up, and that's on me, not on the commissioners.
Whatever.
But it'll be changed.
I just read through it, and it's like, well, that doesn't make sense.
Well, you know, that's part of the reason we have a public hearing, so that the commissioners can hear input from everyone, and we appreciate you taking the time to do it.
Okay. And I want to thank Mike for sending me the proposed ordinance, because there wasn't any other way to get a hold of it. It was published to look at, so a lot of the public would have to rely on the commissioners to get the information, so I thank you for that.
Yeah, I wasn't contacted either.
Mac emailed me, and I just.
Oh.
And I guess I, I mean, you gave your reasons why, but I also believe the fee is a little high of 250, just to start, but that's up to the commissioners, I understand that.
What would you suggest appropriate fee would be?
I don't, I don't have a suggestion.
Okay.
I'm just saying, based on what the other counties had, it was quite an increase from what they had. And I hear you say that maybe they're underpriced, but that's a heck of a, you know, for a first-time shot, and for many people that have more than one buggy and more than one trailer, it's a pretty good expense. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other comments against? Your name and address?
Good morning. I'm George Abel. I live at 315 East 9th, but I have property at 4948 County Road 43. And I've known Amish people for almost my whole life. I went to school with two of the boys that their father owned the property down on County Road 45, north of 68, right south of 60, well, south of 68, by the name of Smucker. They were in school with me in grade school. And my concern is, the fee that you want to impose is double that of the highest of the other local counties, and that is just plain wrong. And I agree with one of the comments that was made a few moments ago about the fact that you don't want to keep raising the fees, but that has nothing to do with it. What really has to do with is, we have recently, you passed a ordinance that gave permission for off-road vehicles to be on the roads. I have one. I respect that right. But we have some who don't, living in the area where my other property is. And they go out with their small ones, their one-person ones, do no nuts in the middle of the road, and then we're expected to drive over the gravel road until the county truck comes by and levels it the next time. Everybody is short of money, you guys included. I understand that. This isn't the way to raise it. And I'm very disappointed that you believe that you need to put that kind of a price on it if you are going to do it. They are common people, just like you and I. They make a living. They pay their taxes. The only tax they don't pay is social security. They take care of their own. And I, for one, am totally against this ordinance. Thank you.
Do you have a suggestion on what the fee should be?
I don't have a suggestion on what the fee should be, because it shouldn't be.
Should be zero?
Zero.
And just so you know, the ATVs, we cannot by state law charge a separate tax and fee for them to use our roads.
I've owned one for long enough that I don't have any problem with it. Mine happens to be a side-by-side.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, we can't charge a fee for that, unfortunately. I wanted to, and we couldn't.
I know. I understand that, but you allowed them to be there. Now, the next thing that brings me to is that you don't have the patrol officers on the road to be able to watch that. I'm sorry, but you don't. As a matter of fact, a lot of times, there's only two men on the road, and one of them may be at the far end of one corner of the county, and the other one's at the other end. They can't take care of what's going on. You need to address that as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Step up to the mic, state your name and address.
My name's Hilliard Munsey. I live on County Road 63, 4463. I'm a member of the Horsemen's Association. This had been addressed, I guess, but I don't know it had ever been decided. I was here to see how it was going to affect our association. We do a lot of public service. We haul people to their resting places. We take care of the town's parades. And anything else that people request to have as a recreation, or a death, or something like that, we step up to the plate and try to do that. I think $250 is very excess- accessible. Excess, not about. I'm not totally against unordinance, but I think $250 is very out of line. You talk about tearing up the roads. If you know my address, you know where I live. 25 years ago, when they was building SDI, they beat the living heck out of those roads over there. You say, "Yeah, the semis pay road tax and all that." Semis don't belong on them roads. It's not a dump truck route either, unless you're making a delivery to somebody in that area. I understand them have to travel the road. They've never enforced any of the laws over there. Coming out of Ohio, I call it State Road 40 now. We built a road for them to follow into the mill and that. State Road 8, they're beating that up. That road is not designed for semi-traffic the way it is. None of that's been enforced, because you're getting gas tax. Well, are you getting the fuel tax from Indiana? Or are they fueling in another state? I don't see the horse is tearing up the roads like these semis and that, not following proper routes. There's nothing been done on County Road 63 since SDI went in and before that, except a chip and seal, and to me, that's a waste of money. Drive down that road once, you'll know what I'm talking about. And it hasn't, buggies and that tearing it up, or horses. It's the semis. I, I think it's excessive on the thing.
I think you should take a drive up LaGrange County. If you want to see, if you want to see roads tore up, and it's not semis.
Have you drove down our road, Bill?
I've been down a lot of roads.
Have you been down that one, though?
Yes. I've been down a lot of roads.
How fast you drive it?
I don't think that's relevant to the conversation today.
Whatever, but I'm saying, the horses aren't the only ones tearing up these roads.
I agree.
Well, I think that's.
I agree.
That's a fair statement, and I don't think any of this ordinance is blaming the road conditions exclusively on the Amish community.
Of course not.
Or on horse-drawn vehicles. There's a lot of contributing factors.
So, how's this going to affect the Horsemen's Association? That's, I'm not here representing them. I'm here as a member.
I think we'd have to include them to be fair. I don't think it's fair to charge one and not the other. What do you think the fee ought to be? I've asked this to everyone. I'd like to hear. Everyone says it's too much, but no one wants to throw a number out. I'd like to hear a number.
125 to 150 at the most.
Thank you.
I don't think that's totally unreasonable.
All right. Appreciate that.
But for a trailer and all that, I think that's a little more excessive too. But for a trailer and all that, I think that's a little more excessive, too. The vehicles aren't doing the trouble. It's the horses, you say.
Yes. The horseshoes.
So are you tack... Why don't you put the tax on the horse, then? I mean, you're putting it on a vehicle tax.
I don't know how you'd attach a plate to a horse's rear end, but I suppose we could try it. I don't want to stand behind it when you do it, though.
So how are you going to register these vehicles? You're going to have to put serial numbers on them and all that to correspond with the registration?
No, we expect honesty there. There's very few of them.
Well, how can you issue a plate if it don't have identification of what's going on?
In honesty.
You do with your car, you got to have it.
I think we're starting to split hairs here.
Yeah, I think we're getting out in the weeds here. I don't... I can assure you, we're not going to ask people to put serial numbers on their... On their buggies and trailers and so forth. You know?
My biggest concern is excessive. I think excessive amount.
Point taken.
Thank you for then put on the fees, too.
My name is Wayne Spunhor. I live here in the city on West 3rd Street. I started life with Smuckers in Spencerville. They're very pleasant people, hardworking. I was glad to hear the mayor point out that they're helping us conserve our land, because they are part of the land. They work the land to raise their families. I think $250 is excessive. Actually, I think it's a waste of time. I think you're discriminating against some of our most pleasant citizens. So I'm against the ordinance. I would suggest if we just put ATV on the back of every buggy, the state can't collect the tax. Now, people call me an eccentric, and I'm proud of it. But I stand with the Amish. I'm totally against this. Thank you.
Anyone else need to wish to comment?
Dave Garrig is the name here. I live on... David Garrig.
Garrig.
Garrig. Yeah. 5754 County Road 35, Auburn. I'm not a speech specialist, so I just want to give my viewpoint about, you know, all these people that spoke already, they did a good job, and they tell the right thing. The fees, $250, even $50 is too much money. It's severely inflated. It needs to be significantly lowered. You're doing the Amish wrong by what you're doing with... What you're proposing. It ain't fair to the Amish. They don't cost that much money for a plate. You know, somebody turned them in. Somebody probably, an English individual turned them in. Somebody with a horse and buggy on County Road 68, they don't know what they're doing. It caused a bunch of trouble. You can't get away from that kind of thing. But it's unfair to the Amish in our community, for our side of the county line, to be imposed with those kind of unfair fees. You know, my car only paid $36 for the year for a plate. I pay my own insurance. Insurance don't cost very much money. Amish generally don't believe in insurance. They have their own financial aid, that there's some kind of bad problem or something, they take care of their own. And that's the way it should be. So it needs to be significantly lowered, what you propose, especially the $250 fee, even the $50 fee. That buggy is not worth that much money. As far as a horse...
Huh? The buggy isn't worth that $50 bucks?
The horse and buggy, you know, the plate that you're proposing, it's not worth that much money.
Well, most of the buggies I've seen are... I don't know. Some of them buggies are pretty expensive, aren't they, guys? I mean, honestly, aren't they three, four, five, up to $10,000 for a really nice one?
Yeah, they're expensive, some of them, you know, but that's what I'm trying to get at.
I just want to clarify, that's not true. They're worth more probably than your car, if you're only paying $36, but okay.
There's all kinds of cars, some good, some bad. They cost too much. The horseshoes is hard on the roads, but you know, Allen County, they got a lot of roads that's got damaged, but they don't fix them. I've seen them patch them, but patching is different than repair, you know, fixing them. They don't fix them. They don't fix them right when they do do anything with them. Okay, some of the roads have got moderate damage, some of them's got real bad damage, because it's been years and years of travel with that type of thing. And that's always been in that location, not here. There's only two roads in the DeKalb County area that really would be an issue with the horseshoes and/or the buggy. The buggy don't hurt the roads. Ain't no such thing. Whoever called and turned that in is a joke. Okay. There's only a portion of County Road 68 and the DeKalb County line that's really in effect, maybe one-third estimated, that would be any kind of travel issue with the Amish, okay?
Sir, we're not here to determine what roads are used or not used.
Well, most of them are gravel.
It's kind of irrelevant. We... Everybody uses the roads. The roads cost the county a lot of money to maintain. People with cars, they pay their taxes. They pay money to use these roads.
A plate's okay.
And if we say, well, the Amish can use them for nothing, then they're discriminating against the motorists that are paying these taxes.
Yeah, I know, but a plate is okay.
So what do you... Where do we cut this off at?
Well, the plates...
You know what I'm saying? And I think we just... We're splitting hairs there. Like Mike said, we're getting into the weeds with some of this. It's what roads are used is not a... Is not a point of discussion today. They're using the roads. And we cannot determine exactly when they use which road or how much they use a road. There's no way of knowing that. Point is, they are using the roads. And I see no problem with the paying... When you say $250 is excessive, some of these cars pay much, much more than that, not only in gas tax and license plates, excise tax. So what's fair... What's fair to them and what's fair to the Amish? I don't know how we even determine that. The point is, we spend a lot of money to maintain these roads. And every bit we can accumulate to do that, we need to do that. And not put it all on one segment of the population and exempt another segment of the population. Everybody needs to pay. That's the way it is. It's either that or maybe you want to maintain the roads out of your pocketbook. Is that what we want to do?
We used to do some of that.
What "used to" does... We're not talking about "used to." We're talking about today.
I know, but we used to do some of that, because they weren't there to help us. They don't do it now, but that's been a long time ago. But you know, things have developed, but...
We need to move on here and...
You're not fair with that $250 charge and/or $50 charge, because most of the roads in DeKalb County are gravel roads. That's the ones that they use the most.
That's not true. Now, 280 miles are gravel. We have 740 mile... Or 720 miles of roads.
But what I'm saying is, most of the travel with a horse and buggy is on them roads. I mean, there's not that much on the tarbound roads, and the damage, if there's any, is minimal. You can't even see it.
Yeah, but then we...
That takes years to get there.
Then we'd have to say they can't travel on asphalt roads, and that's... You're going into the weeds on that.
Yeah, I know, but...
So the fee's too high, right?
Huh?
The fee's too high at $50, correct?
Well, not anymore than that.
Okay.
What I'm trying to say is, the $250 is extremely severe, or it's inflated so high, it's ridiculous. It should never be charged that much money. And nobody else does. Allen County's a plate fee is like in the $50 range. A plate is okay. I mean, I'm not disputing the fact that they're not... That they don't share in the cost by not having a plate on there. A plate is okay, the lights.
Sir, sir, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Yeah, I know.
We're just going places we don't need to go. I'm going to have to cut you off.
We're starting to repeat ourselves.
Yeah, we're repeating, and so I have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
Well, work needs to be done to get it adjusted.
Please have a seat.
It ain't fair to these guys.
Well, then it's not fair to any motorists. We're all paying too much.
It needs work done.
We're all paying too much.
Well, you're really throwing it to these guys. That ain't what the way it's supposed to be. It needs work done, and then let us know, so we can decide on it. You know, we're the people. There's more of us than there's you.
Sir, we'll call security.
My name is Mary Smalls. I live at 1205 Roger Drive in Auburn. Good morning, county commissioners. Good morning, folks here. I'm here to ask why the DeKalb County commissioners have selected horse-drawn vehicles that are so much higher than the 10 counties in northeast Indiana. I've read the ordinances. I've looked them up. I've called the auditor's office. The highest being Adams County at $120, and the seven other counties are... Some of them have none, $50 to $100. During the 18th commissioners' meeting, license fee for Amish buggies were discussed. Commissioner Hartman suggested $500, because the Amish do more road damage than cars, and they pay very little compared to what a car pays. I've also listened to all the commissioners. Several of us made a tour of Concord, Newville, and Spencer Township, looking at the road damage. Most of what we saw were potholes, washed-out areas making washboard roads, and some shoe pitting and buggy line. Buggies are using rubber wheels, and they're doing, is it? Horseshoes, which make much less damage than regular iron horseshoes do. I would like Ben Parker to tell us which roads have been so severely damaged by the Amish buggies, because honestly, I spent hours and hours and found them. Now, when I crossed the line into Allen County, there was some difference, but not a lot. The Amish... We seem to be comparing ourselves with Magrange and Elkhart Counties. The Amish population of DeKalb County is about 450. Is that close? Is that pretty close? Yeah. About the total Amish population? It wouldn't be more than... When I was trying to figure out...
Mary, Mary, we need to move on.
Elkhart, Magrange, Noble.
We're going to get up against the clock here, Mary.
Elkhart, Magrange, Noble Counties have 26,380 people, Amish people. Elkhart, Koske, also 6,300. Allen, 3,445. Adams, 10,305. Those are 20 statistics DeKalb has current. Now, I want to talk about an automobile valued at $15,000 to $17,000 would depreciate from $207 the first year to $21 after 10 years. Now, that means that in a 10-year total for their vehicle, they're paying $1,099 in registered... Vehicle registration fees. About, correct?
If you keep that car that long, probably... Depends on the car, yes.
But we're talking about buggies, if that they keep that long. And the fine for the expired plates is $25, with total fees not including... Equalling $160. Now, an Amish vehicle, an Amish buggy, which they're going to keep 10 years, is $250 times 10 years. That's $2,500. That's not reasonable.
Mary...
The first offense...
Mary...
No.
Mary, can I add something?
Yes.
You've left out the gasoline tax that that car would pay.
I'll get there.
I hope so.
For the first offense, the fine for expired plates is $250. For the second and subsequent violations, the fine is $500. And I believe this fee structure also applies to the lights. That's outrageously more than we pay for the same problem with a motorized vehicle. To think that the Amish do not pay fair tax is ridiculous. They pay for it in gas, diesel, propane-powered equipment, and also to their drivers, who use the roads, and pass those costs on to the riders. Amish buggies generally travel and... More than about 15, 20 miles from home. Automobiles travel all over the county, traveling more miles. They create stress on roads as well. Sales tax is paid on a car, and we know that. In your discussion in one of your meetings, Mr. Hartman said kind of implied that on horse-drawn vehicle purchases, you wouldn't pay sales tax. You didn't pay any tax. Well, I think you do. Our property taxes are based on assessed valuation. Amish have large farms, business operations, and they pay taxes to DeKalb County. Doesn't that money also go to the county general fund? Do we pay roads out of the general fund? And by the way, when you get the money for these buggy licenses, you're going to put it in the general fund. Other counties put it in the highway fund. I don't understand that one at all. Also, on the lighting thing, did you talk to any of the Amish about how this was going to work on the buggies, since there are so many different kinds? Did you? Did you consult them? Did any of you talk to our local Amish? Because we're not Magrange and Stubeck.
We went with what we thought was the safest for them.
But did you ask them?
Every time I read an article in Magrange County, Allen County, any county where an Amish buggy has been ran over by a car...
I get it. I'm not arguing they should have lights.
I want them to be safe. Mary, let me finish, please. You're really being kind of rude here. Our concern is their safety. And that was my number-one concern through this whole process. And the only way we can establish that and enforce that is to have a registration fee.
I'm not arguing, Bill. I'm telling you, it's way too high. It's out of line.
So it's the money.
We have to take a break. We're up against a break. We have a...
Pledge.
Pledge to do.
Oh, yeah.
So we have to take a recess.
Well, respectfully, I ask that you adjust those fees to something's reasonable, like $125.
$125?
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
I'm fine.
Guys, we'll take about 10 minutes for a brief...
Yeah, 10 minutes.
We stay with the pledge and then take a little time after that. Uh, you're first. 10, 14.